Vice Chair, I'll be sitting in tonight for Peter Pecos, who's feeling a little bit under the weather. And George Morse will be participating remotely. George, can you acknowledge that you can hear us and that you're present?
I am present and I can hear you.
All right, thank you, George. And to my right is...
Leslie Matthews.
And to my left, immediate left...
Mary Stone.
And...
Woody Neigh.
Okay, thank you. So the first order of business is the July financial report. Martha?
And that's actually, I left that there for you. It's at the bottom of your pile.
Do you want me to read it?
Yes, Pete usually does, so.
So the Planning Board financial report, July 2021. The payroll invoices authorized, payroll warrants for the Planning Director and Planning Admin. PR 2201 for the period ending 7/3/21. PR 2202 for the period ending 7/17/21. And PR Payroll 2203 for the pay period ending 7/31/21. And under Planning Board expense invoices, we have Verizon Wireless, Planning Board iPad 7/21/21. Staples Planning Office Supplies 7/21/21. And MVPC Fiscal Year 2022 Assessment, page 7/21/21. And that, I believe, is our financial report.
That is the financial report.
May I ask a question on that?
Sure.
The Verizon, is that just like AT&amp;T or...
Yeah, it's basically the data plan for this iPad.
That's my only question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on, next item is old business. I don't think we have anything, do we?
No, we don't, not tonight.
Anything to bring up? And under new business, Tom Zerico, Zedco LLC, requests for endorsement of definitive subdivision plan for the 15 Coleman Road OSRD subdivision. Martha, maybe you can bring us up to date on this?
Sure. So as you may recall at the last meeting, the board voted to basically approve the Form D performance covenant for the project. And so in your packets, there is actually the copy of the signed notarized thing. It's been notarized by his mortgagees as well as by... Signed by the mortgagees as well as by Tom. He would be here tonight with us, but he's having hip surgery today, so.
Good luck to him.
So anyway, and the appeal period for the decision, which was filed on July 12th, has passed. So those were the two stipulations in order to get endorsement.
So would it be appropriate or a motion to move to endorse the plans?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
George, any discussion?
No discussion.
Leslie, any discussion?
No.
Woody, any discussion? And Mary, any thoughts?
Nope.
George, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Leslie, on the motion? Woody?
Yes.
I vote in the affirmative. And any thoughts, Mary? You want to share with us?
Yes, yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. So do you want to do that now?
We could do that now, or we could do that at the end, whatever you think. Maybe we should go through the rest of the agenda, short as it is. And I do have my lars and many pens here.
So Planning Director's report then, next item.
So a few things. We now have a new conservation agent, Samantha Holt, who started this week.
Any relation?
His daughter.
Okay.
And she's already been out at Sightwalk and had her first Concom. Actually, she started last week, her first Concom meeting last night. And we also have a new admin for Inspection Services Concom, Chrissy Bopray, who's been here for a week. And so we're getting settled downstairs. A couple of project updates. We had a Sightwalk at 15 Coleman Road yesterday, a pre-construction conference. So the contractor was there, and Tom and his engineer, and Samantha, and I, and Joe Sirwodka. So he went over schedule with us. He's anticipating actually starting to cut trees next Monday. He's got the erosion control down, is going to work quickly to get the roadway in, is hoping to start the first foundation in September, and will stagger them and be completely complete by the end of next year. He still needs to get the septic plan approved by the Board of Health. So I think that's his one remaining approval. But he will be, plans intends to move quickly. He's got reservations on three of the lots already, three houses. So that will be going forward. The other construction update I have is the one for the Gadsden Lane project. I got an update this morning, yesterday morning, excuse me, from Adam. So he's doing hammering this week and planning tree removal. Will be putting finished gravel on the road next week, August 16th through 20th, electrical conduit crossings and driveway aprons, August 23rd to 27th, finish grade road and install binder coat of asphalt. So again, he's also moving very quickly. And I know he does have a reservation on one of the lots. I don't have any updates on any of our other recently approved projects, but we'll fill you in as I get those. And I think I might have mentioned this previously, but, excuse me, sorry.
Can we get you some water?
No, I don't think it'll help.
I'm in the same boat.
The 170 Orchard Street project may be coming back. That came before the board previously as an OSRD. And this will be a much, probably a four-lot subdivision, conventional. So I'm going to be meeting with the Realtor representing the seller next week. So, and that's it for my report.
Just on Coleman Road, Martha, is it still the intention to move that out building?
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, on that, that's like, has to additional, like additions to it. Are they going to...
They're just moving the original portion of it.
Just the original portion.
Which is about 19 by 20, something like that.
And that'll go, if you're looking at the house, it'll go to the left-hand side.
Yeah, it's going to go left, sort of in the back corner, back-left corner of the house.
And what will happen to the two, like additions that have been...
I think they'll just be demolished, yeah. I mean, they're more modern, they don't have any real significance.
Yeah.
No, it's in rough shape, but it does have a mover who feels that he can do it, so.
Yeah, he said that at the last meeting. And that's actually one thing I would like to go down and watch that happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be interesting to see how that all happens.
Yeah, I'll see if I can find out when that's actually going to happen. He's supposed to be giving us a written schedule, as well as a contact list of everybody, so. I'll let you know if I...
That'd be really neat.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else from Martha? George, any other questions?
Nothing else.
Okay, I guess we'll move on to liaison reports. Select Board?
Select Board, quite a few people came and expressed concern, again, for the Larkin Road Parish Road Bridge. The Select Board's going to put it on their next agenda meeting, so they actually will be able to discuss it in more detail. And then the other big item that was on was the IT. Matt got up and explained what's going on with the the lack of good receptions happening with Channel 9. On the last meeting, most of the public that were tuning in via television had no audio. And the audio that did come through was gibberish. And he was explaining how it all goes. You know, it starts here, it goes there, it goes there, it goes there, it goes there. And he laid out some parameters on what the cost could be to move it into this location, from the low-end spectrum to the high-end spectrum. And so the Select Board's going to take that under consideration as well. They did say that they have money in the account, that they could take care of it, move it over, that, you know, that Peg Access has money and they could move it over. But witnessing people that had videoed it via telephone, the, there was no sound. And it sounded like aliens talking to you.
It was.
And that's what the people at home are seeing. So it's really, you know, it's very difficult. And I think it's, it would be beneficial for, this is my opinion, beneficial for the public to have the access, again, to Zoom, so that they get the better communication, because they're not getting it at home. And like last week, the last Select Board meeting, it was terrible weather. And a lot of people just won't come out in that kind of weather. You were here, right?
Yes.
You heard it?
Yes.
It was awful. So they're taking both of those things under consideration. Those seem to be the most important things that were on the agenda that night. And they did grant the planting of a tree down at the lower green to honor...
Peter Hollis, the former tree warden who passed away.
Had a discussion about that. And they did kind of go through, they changed some of the area where the tree was going to originally be planted. And then they came to a decision on a different location. And that was last Saturday, that they did the planting.
Very good.
Leslie, when is the next Select Board meeting?
August 24th.
I'm sorry, say again?
August 24th.
And so what is going to happen about Larkin and Parish at that point?
They want to go in, and they've granted the community from Larkin and Parish on both sides, both Georgetown and Newbury. And they're going to look into it. Basically, the...
You mean at that meeting?
At that meeting, yeah, it's going to be on the agenda.
Okay, will there be ability for people to speak?
Yes.
Oh, great. And ask questions?
Yes.
Perfect.
And both Georgetown, because the people that are on the Parish roadside, which is Georgetown, also have great concern on what's going on.
I'll speak with them.
The concern is that it's going to become a cut-through.
Right.
And the road is extremely narrow. It doesn't fall into the parameters of the road size that we're looking at these days. And only, the thing is, what is it? About 95% of the bridge belongs to Newbury and 5% belongs to Georgetown. Somewhere along that lines.
Yep.
But the people from Newbury are concerned because all of the construction vehicles and things like that will come down Larkin Road.
Indeed.
Because that's, that other side of the street is Georgetown.
Right.
So, and they, the Newbury Byfield people have attended the Georgetown meetings. And there's the same kind of concern from Georgetown as there is from Newbury. And apparently, the, I think it's the, was the Chief of Police in Georgetown said that he was on board for the work, and he didn't see any detrimental effects for emergency vehicles going down those roads. But they're narrow, and I think Parish Road is even more narrow than Larkin Road.
So this will all be brought up on August 24, and these concerned residents will get a chance to weigh in finally.
Yes.
And get their questions answered finally.
Well, they're, I don't know if all their questions will be able to be answered.
Well, I mean, within reason, of course.
But yes, they will, and both sides will be able to step forward and...
Good, perfect.
Explain what their concerns are.
Good. Are we allowed to go to that meeting?
It's a public meeting.
Public meeting.
No, I mean, but we can't, but as...
Of course you can.
We have no rule, we have no role, so that means...
We have no role as Planning Board members. You certainly can go as a citizen and express your concerns.
Right, yeah, you just need to identify that you're speaking as a resident, not as a member of the Planning Board.
Name and address.
Got it. Thank you, Leslie.
All right, well, thank you, Leslie.
Thank you, thanks, Leslie.
Very, very helpful, very informative.
No, it's okay, you can give a lift here.
Conservation Commission, well, that's Pete, so.
Yeah, I can, I can report on two things, because I helped Pete Zoom in last night for two items that needed his participation. One was the Cricket Lane Notice of Intent. So that is going through the Concom process, and was continued to the Concom's next meeting, which will be on September 7th. And I think they're sort of trying to get, they're going to be reviewing the sort of environmental and wetland resource information that was provided, and peer review that was done for the ZBA process. And the other one was the NOI from the Trustees of Reservations for the Marsh Restoration Project down on Newman Road, which was approved. And then Pete and I both left.
Okay. All right, good, thank you, Martha. I don't have anything to report on the ZBA, so.
I watched it. It was, what, you just had one person?
Yeah, yeah, there wasn't anything, anything that would be likely to come before this board. So MVPC, I know they're on their summer break.
Yeah, they are on their summer break. There is going to be a planners' meeting later this month, I think on the 26th, but no regular commission meetings until September.
Okay. So I think that does it for liaison reports. And I don't think we have any minutes, do we, Martha?
No, we'll pass on those tonight.
And the last item on the agenda is the election of officers and liaison positions. I'd suggest we hold off on this until...
Yes, since Pete's not here.
Pete's available.
Yeah.
Okay, is that the sense of the board, that we ought to hold off on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, should we start signing?
Yeah, so you want to keep the meeting open while that happens?
I think so, yeah.
There are 30 drawings, so it'll take a little...
I will say, George, as much as we enjoy your company, you're welcome to sit here for the next 20 minutes and watch us sign, or if you want to sign off. We have a floor without you.
Would you like me to see Martha and sign if you would like to?
Beg pardon?
Martha, would you like me to come in and sign in the office?
If you can, that would be great. I'm actually not going to be here tomorrow, but I can have Emily coordinate with you, if that's okay, or...
Okay.
Or you could do it next week, although I think they're hoping to get them signed. I don't know what your schedule is.
For tomorrow, I'm tied up somewhat, but Friday might be okay.
All right, I will not be...
Are you up for Friday?
The offices are not, I will actually not be here on Friday either. But Emily might be. I'll talk to her about it and see if she can coordinate a time that works for you.
Yeah, she can reach me. I'm tied up early afternoon and the morning, I've got some stuff going on too. So have her call me, we'll try to fit in a time.
Okay, all right, I'll leave her that message, thank you.
You're welcome. So I will say good evening.
All right.
All right, George, thank you.
See you, George, see you in the garage.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Do you need me?
I don't think so. Again, unless you want to see me practicing my penmanship.
You know, you're a charming guy, but that doesn't...
But not that charming.
That doesn't pique my interest.
No, I think we can, I don't think we need to...
Thank you, sweetheart. Okay. This is Mary Stone, signing off, thank you. That's the news, and I'm out of here.
Have a good night, Perry.
Thank you, and thank you for taking care of my cane.
I left mine on the table, so it can't flow on the floor.
My cane buddy over here. And I'm going to leave a pen for you.
All right, good night, Mary.
See you, guys.
Have a good night.
Bye, Mary.
Bye, Mary.
Bye, guys. Thank you, Martha. Leslie and Woody and, I'm going to be over for those bits. No, I'm only kidding, I'm only kidding, Leslie.
No, you can. My tomatoes are just starting to come in. So I have Sam Marzano's and, I forget the other ones, but they're like big, they're not, they're not big boys or anything, but they're delicious.
I'm only kidding. See you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Good night, Mary.
Kind of found these out on the table.
We can do whatever you want.
Going to do an assembly line or something, I don't know.
You're in charge.
Unfortunately, the signature block is kind of all over the place, depending on how things fit on it. And one for you, one for you.
Slide over, Chip.
So, I don't know, maybe it's just...
One at a time.
If you want to, if you want to start, and then I'll just slide them down.
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay. Should Larry start, or does it matter what the order is?
I don't really think it matters what the order is.
These are all the copies.
So up here in the corner?
Up in the corner, yeah. Or you can do it on the second line if you want to, if you want Larry to sign on the first.
Yeah.
These are all the copies that Tom Z was asking you if he needed, right?
Yes.
Oh, is it two?
Yeah.
Ah.
Okay, which one do I have?
Oh, yeah, look at that.
Oh, I do. All right. Geez, all these high-tech, where's the...
Oh, wow, yeah, that's real skinny.
So now we go to here? Or...
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
It's here.
My skinny ends, there it is.
I'll back up again, or do you think they'll smudge?
It might, well, it was smudgy though.
Okay.
I think it's in that lower right-hand corner. It's hard to see that.
It is. Oh, here. Yeah, because you're seeing the other print come through.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I was thinking maybe fanning the mouth. It's easier.
Those are, that's forever, so it's supposed to.
They're supposed to, yeah.
Oh, I've got more than one page here.
Oh, yes. Okay, snarky.
Hmm. If it wasn't for the signing, we couldn't beat George's record for the shortest meeting ever.
I think my first meeting was the shortest meeting. Rachel was still the chair, and she looked at me and she goes, "Don't get used to this."
Yeah, I remember that.
How long was the shortest meeting?
I think it was 25 minutes, that, you know, my first meeting.
I've heard about the shortest meeting before, George is, is it that short?
Apparently, I wasn't there. I remember Pete mentioning it a couple of meetings ago.
But we did have some marathons this past year.
Yeah.
There were times at home where I'm sitting at the table and I think, I am going to sew some...
And what was the address of the, in your report for the...
170 Orchard Street.
170 Orchard, and that's the address.
We're getting there. I think they got two sheets.
Get two on this one?
Yeah.
And we can start seeing the table through the mileaus, if anyone gets close.
Get one on that one.
Which slide are they going to start with, Martha? Did he say? Not that it matters for our purposes, but just curious.
Yeah, I think it's going to be these three, the reservations on, so it's a priority. So it's in the, you know, the existing house next week, I think.
We'll get out of here before the flash flood warning.
It's supposed to get some...
Eight o'clock tomorrow morning?
Yeah.
There's rain, I think, at midnight.
Yeah.
Like we haven't had enough this year, so.
Well, you know, I don't mind the rain, but it's just that beating down. And it's come down so, it comes down so fast, it has nowhere to go. Must be taking a toll on the farmway. I know some of my crops are, especially flowers, are having a harder time. Oh, they, oh, yeah.
There are two feet extra tall of them, they usually are, right?
At least. I watched that.
I've seen ragweed as tall as a 10-foot panel on the side of my drive. I've not seen so tall. I've seen it go like eight feet, but not 10 feet. The pond's full. Usually, closed ponds, less than a few feet, but no. Yeah, they're not falling apart yet, so.
I saw through and signed in the wrong place, so where is it? Up here? Wow, okay. Up here, wow, okay. Yeah, the underside came through. This one would be doubly sure.
Yeah.
Down here, because the underside came.
It looked, it looked like.
Yeah.
So I keep track of how long it takes to sign, mylos, might be a racket.
I think this is about a minute set.
It's sticky.
Oh, here we go. Martha, I realized after the fact that I neglected to introduce you at the opening of the meeting.
That's all right.
It wasn't intentional.
I'll tell ya, if nobody knows who she is, and doesn't know who she is in town.
Get into his CONCOM meeting last night?
Um, well, he's, he's, he's been under the weather. He zoomed him in for those two items.
Bingo.
Well done.
It's kind of an awkward position, isn't it?
It is, yeah. Very good.
All right, thank you.
Okay, well, I guess we're ready for a motion to.
Motion to adjourn.
To adjourn. I'm gonna, do we have a second, Woody?
Second.
And I'm gonna assume there's no discussion, Leslie?
None.
Uh, how do you, how do you vote on the motion?
I vote yes.
Woody?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you.
All right.
There it is.
Only discussion.